It's 6 o'clock. Welcome, everybody. It's March 27th. This is a regular town hall meeting for the Town of Reinbeck. Everybody please stand to the right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Okey dokey. We have a couple of announcements. Our Spring Day party will be happening at the Thompson Maserano Park on Saturday, the first. It's Saturday at 10:00 p.m. It's open from kids -- a.m., I'm sorry. You know what I meant. From kids that are 3 to 10.
Zero to 10.
Zero to 10. So little kids, too. We are working with the Town of Red Hook. Red Hook responds in the Red Hook Community Center for a community needs assessment. We still have a very low turnout on people filling out the needs assessment, so please go to our town website and fill it out. The Dutchess County Historical Society and the Executive Director, Bill Jeffway, will be presenting a digital history walk of Oak Street, which is really fascinating, here in Town Hall this Friday at 7:00 p.m. All are welcome. Oh, Dutchess County is holding a backyard composting workshops on the 29th, 30th, and 4th of April, and 29th and 30th of March. For more information, call Dutchess County Composting at 845-463-6020. I'd like to make a motion. Does anybody else have anything to say? No? And Josh Pulver is unable to be with us for personal business tonight. Motion for the approval of prior minutes from our March 13th meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Chans. May I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or comments? A favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We have a presentation tonight on community choice aggregation.
Are you going to need the projector?
It's up my right. I can see it's not set up, so I think we can -- I can walk through it. I think the slides are in the agenda packet.
They're in the agenda packet. They're on our website, and they were sent out as attachments for this. Anybody wishing for more information on community choice in the Town of Reinbeck? This is not for village residents, unfortunately. It's only for towns outside the village residents. We don't have jurisdiction over the village. Please go to our website for it. Great. Hi, can you introduce yourself?
Yes, of course. My name is Glenn Weinberg. I'm from Jewel Community Power. We are the Town's community choice aggregation administrator. And I'll just -- we've been here several times, but usually that needs a little unpacking. Community choice aggregation is a municipal policy available for cities, towns, and villages in New York State to select, to authorize themselves to select the default energy suppliers for residential and small commercial customers within their municipality. And as the supervisor correctly pointed out, it goes to the lowest jurisdiction. So the village, a village sitting within a town, has to authorize and take the same steps independently. So the town does not -- a town taking steps does not impact village residents and vice versa. So with that, I can tell you a little bit about why we're here tonight. We are in the midst of the competitive bidding process for the community choice aggregation for a group of 15 municipalities, 13 of which are here in the Hudson Valley, in Central Hudson Service Territory. All of those 13, including the Town of Reinbeck, are now at the same point of this process, which is a decision point, which is why we're here to discuss it. And the decision that is in front of the board tonight is on a preapproval document that is a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, which does a few things. One, it preapproves both the form of the agreement, which is the legal backbone of the program, which is a tri-party agreement between the Town, Jewel as the program administrator or program manager, and the eventual winner of the RFP, the supplier or ESCO. So one is it approves in form that agreement. Second, it also preapproves the pricing benchmarks, which have been included in the RFP for suppliers to meet compliance. They must, you know, be lower than those pricing benchmarks for the applicable products and offering options, and I can talk a little bit about that. There are three offerings that have been bid in for the Town to review and select between, although you can offer all three, and we recommend that you offer all three. The Town's decision is which of those three ought to be the default. As some of you may know, this is an opt-out program, meaning that when the Town chooses a new supplier as their default energy supplier, that replaces Central Hudson as the default supplier, which means that folks are automatically enrolled. So just as if you move into town and you were to call to set up your electric service today, they would automatically put you on Central Hudson for their variable monthly supply. They are, of course, always the distributor of energy. That is a monopoly, so they own the poles and wires, the meters. They're the ones that you call either with CCA or in the absence of CCA, they're the ones that you call if you have any service interruption, your power's down, something's wrong with your bill, et cetera. That stays the same. What the community choice aggregation program addresses is the competitive part of your bill, which is where you get your supply. So Central Hudson is the current default by taking this authority, which many municipalities in Central Hudson Territory have and continue to make. By taking this authority, the Town is now establishing the default in lieu of Central Hudson for that competitive part of your bill, the supply portion. That means that folks will automatically be enrolled. If they are eligible, they'll automatically be enrolled unless they choose to opt out. And they could do so before the program ever begins or anytime thereafter. So they can always leave with no penalty whatsoever. They can also always come back with no penalty or extra surcharge whatsoever. But it does become the default in the Town, and therefore customers, eligible customers, will be automatically enrolled unless they make an alternate choice to remove themselves. For that reason, it's important that the Town selects which of those three offerings that have been included in the RFP and that suppliers have bid on should be the default offering for customers, meaning if they don't make an active decision on their own, that that will be what their product and price that they're involved in. Now, they can always move around. Individual consumers can choose to move around. There is a standard or conventional option, which is the least expensive, and from a supply mix perspective, mirrors roughly the Central Hudson mix, which is largely fossil fuel with a small amount of renewables. There's a 50% New York State renewable option, which is the mid-priced option.
I'm sorry, Glenn. What is the benchmark price for the 80% fossil fuel option?
It's 12, 12.55. So 12 cents and 55.
About it. And the blended benchmark?
It's -- I'll get you the precise number right here.
I know. I'm just --
The blended, the 100% renewable is 14.55, and the blended, though it's not right here, it's right about in the middle, so about 13 and a half cents.
And what, where is Central Hudson right now?
That, so their 12.55 number is actually derived by taking a 12-month look back at Central Hudson. What the New York State rules say is that for a conventional, a non-renewable offering, the CCA price must be below 5% above the 12-month average of the utility price. So that 12.55 represents 5% above the published 12-month look back from Central Hudson.
So, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no, please go.
To my mind, there are two reasons to do this. One is to offer customers an option for a standard rate that's immune to --
Fluctuation.
Thank you. And the other is to really be a proponent of clean energy. So why would we want to offer an 80% fossil fuel or a blended option?
Really just for choice, for customer choice.
But I mean, if people opt out, they can opt into any other one.
Yes.
I mean, we choose the default. They could opt into a lower one or go back to Central Hudson. Why wouldn't we propose the 100% renewable?
Well, many municipalities do, and typically that is our, you know, that today, all but one of our active CCA contracts in New York State are 100%.
How many CCA contracts do you have?
I believe the active is 23, I believe.
With multiple partners on each?
That's right. And 56 municipalities that we represent statewide, some of which are in active contracts, others of which, including the 15 that are part of this bid, are getting ready to get in.
And there are about 640 municipalities in New York State.
I think there's more. I think there's more, like 1,500.
No. Towns and villages?
If you count every little town and village, yeah, I believe. But I could be wrong.
Yeah. According to the New York Association of Towns, I thought it was six. I could be wrong.
Well, that would be even better.
It might be taxation districts more, like firehouses and --
Yeah, that could be.
But anyway.
That could be.
What percentage of New York municipalities have opted into a community choice?
There's roughly 150, or at least last time, there's about 150 that have taken the step to authorize themselves.
So it's growing.
It is growing, very, yes, yes.
I guess those are all my questions.
Sure.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I have one. How is Jewel compensated for its work?
Sure. So we're paid, if and only if there's a contract at the end of this process, we get paid as a per-kilowatt-hour administrative fee from every kilowatt hour that's sold through that contract. So we're agnostic to who wins the bid, you know? It's not as if the bidders can bid in and pay us more or something like that. We take a flat per-kilowatt-hour fee, no matter who wins.
So it's the, it's the successful bidder that compensates you?
It's the bidder that compensates us. It does not appear as a line item on the customer's bill, nor does it come from the municipality. It's paid by the supplier, and they factor that into their bidding.
Thank you.
I sort of interrupted you, but is that the gist of everything?
Well, yeah, just one last thing on the MOU, which is that the other preference that needs to be indicated there is between a fixed price and a variable price. So we did receive bids of both kinds, which is new for CCA in New York. Typically, contracts have been fixed-price contracts essentially across the board. It does represent a sort of innovation or a new offering at least, you know, from that regard. So that is noteworthy. You know, I think what I heard the supervisor just say is that really, you know, that stability, that price stability of a fixed rate is something that is, you know, appealing, and that does tend to be a very strong benefit of CCA fixed contracts, which is that the price stays the same even when there are volatility in the market or fluctuations in the market price for any reason, whether it be weather-related, Russia invades Ukraine, inflation, et cetera, et cetera. So that is typically the advantage of a fixed rate.
And how much higher is that, a half a percentage point higher than the average?
You, the fixed rate that, so the cap, as New York State has defined it, is 5% above what Central Hudson has been over the last 12 months. The bids that we've received, and unfortunately, I can't disclose the pricing here publicly because it's a bid process that's still going on, but the Board does have those numbers in order to make their decision. But what I can say is that they have come in well below that price benchmark, which means that there's some potential, you know, potential savings there against what Central Hudson --
Do you guys have any idea, well, this is, I guess, I'll look for a motion for a Tab 3 resolution. It's Item 2, Resolution 2023-100, an MOU for our community choice aggregation. Ed, thank you. May I have a second?
Certainly.
Thanks, Alan. Are you guys still on board with proceeding with this?
Yes, but I would like to ask a question first. At the very beginning of your presentation, when you first referred to the MOU, you use an adjective like preliminary, temporary, or --
Preapproval.
Would you explain it?
Yes, I will. It's important, a important point as well, is that this MOU only is binding upon a final written approval that will come when executable pricing comes in. So right now, we have indicative pricing. Executable, electricity pricing expires very quickly, right? So if you don't contract same day, the pricing is gone. So for that reason, we have collected indicative pricing, which is quite indicative of what we should expect to see in the quote-unquote "executable" round of pricing, which will go, which will be on April 4th. So right now, all of the municipalities are making the same decision that you are. And by signing that MOU, you are giving a preapproval to move forward, understanding the price caps and the contract, et cetera. But only if and only if there is final written approval from the supervisor on that day of April 4th, would we go ahead and, so you still got a chance to see --
We can still bow out, yeah.
That's right.
So on the MOU, I mean, there's the standard option, the 50% renewable, and the 100% renewable. Is anybody leaning any way?
I'm sorry.
The first leaning any way, you know?
I am.
100%?
100% fixed.
Yeah.
I am, too. You're outvoted.
Well, no, we're discussing it. We haven't voted yet.
Yeah, I can take it. I'm punctual.
For me, the option here that's most important is that people have the opportunity for 100% renewable electricity, you know, to help get off, you know, to the plant, for our environment. And I like the idea that it's fixed, so people will know what the rate is. And I like the idea that we still, you know, in April can look at all of these rates and make a final decision.
And a customer can say, "I don't want to do fixed anymore. I can do variable."
They can't, well, not through the, not through the Town program. They can go out and find a variable rate should they choose from an alternate supplier, but the Town is selecting at this point fixed. The program will offer one.
Is everybody on board with 100% renewable and, are you sure?
Aye.
And a fixed rate? So all in favor of Resolution 2023-100 for 100% renewable at a fixed rate, non-final letter of MOU, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously.
Great. Thanks so much.
I can't believe it. Thanks. Let's see what happens this go.
Yeah, exactly. We're not done yet.
With the new suppliers. Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okey dokey. Let me see. Okay. Tab 2, Resolution 2023-099, cemetery fee schedule. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chans. Suzanne is here. Any questions, concerns, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Tab 3, tab, okay, yeah, bear with me. Tab, let me just, just give me a second. I know. It's the tabs and the numbers, and it's a Monday. Resolution 2023-101, I will make a motion opposing this discharge of radioactive water to the Hudson Run. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Any discussion needed for this? This is for the decommissioning of the Indian Point Nuclear Power Plant. This is sponsored by Manojo Green, Clearwater, Sina Hudson, every environmental nonprofit Any questions, concerns, comments about standing up for not discharging nuclear waste into our -- all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Motion for Resolution 2023-101 for the Manoray Swim Team Agreement of Tab 5.
Motion.
Thanks. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Carrie and I met with Steve Jenkins, the president of the Manorays, and we came up with a very simple letter of agreement. Everything is going swimmingly well. Sorry about --
Point of emphasis.
Yeah, I did it for real. And we just simplified this. We're not losing money. We're attracting new swimmers. It's feeding our lifeguard program. Kids are happy. Parents are happy. We're happy. We just want to keep it as it is. We will provide support and collect fees for them, and next year, we're going to budget $800 a year for their DUSO spend. So the revenue is just covering our costs, and we have a steady supply of lifeguards and really happy kids in Reinbeck on the team. So we're happy to have the support of the Manorays, and I want to thank Carrie for ironing this contract out. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I need a motion for Resolution 2023-103 for the rental of turf field by the Dutch Elite Soccer Team.
So moved.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chans. Jerune is the owner, coach of the Dutch Elite Soccer Field team, and he really provides another outlet for all of our kids. He's in Hyde Park, and he's doing a camp on our field for three full weeks in July and a half a week in August, and we're going to rent the field out to him.
No, I think it's, is it only half a week in August?
Yes.
Oh, I see. Okay, I misread the resolution. Okay.
That's okay. So the rec committee's in full support of this, as is the Reinbeck Soccer League, and they're all of our kids, and it will be a chunk of revenue to go into our capital projects line for replacing the turf field in 12 years when we need to. So it's a win-win. And I also just want to report that, you know, in this meeting with Carrie and Michael DeCola about the field, kids are loving it, and, you know, when Reinbeck Soccer League is out there, they're on half the field. The other half of the field is open. Groups of kids are out there playing. It seems to be a really happy thing. The turf went down around the field last week. The fencing is going up on Thursday. We're having the Item 4 gravel topped up next week, and we're rimming the parking lot, which we'll keep as natural Item 4 in gravel with big boulders that we just purchased. I went out and looked with them at, with Bob White this week. So once that's done, I'd like to have the, you know, driveway widened so that we can have cars going both ways and take out the fence. We'll be open for business. Take out the gate. But I guess I digress a little bit, but everybody's really excited about the field and being played on it. So all in favor?
Wait, wait, wait. Question or comment? You have this as a discussion item. Would you like to open, put it out before we vote on the resolution?
No, it's a different, that's a sort of a different thing. Yeah, this is Dutch Elite, and then I digress so I can repeat everything.
Okay. Oh, I see.
I'll try not to. All in favor for the Dutch Elite to rent our field for three weeks?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay. Resolution 2023-104, I'd like a motion to hire a recreation health director, please. Thanks, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Any discussion or comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2023-105 to approve the soccer field's small field line painting.
Motion.
Thanks. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. This is, we have a whole soccer field, which is huge. We are going to stripe each half-field. It's horizontal. The field is striped horizontally. Each half-field will be striped vertically in a different color, in a light blue, to allow practice on each half-field and smaller games for little, little kids or scrimmages. So it's, it's --
These are permanent lines or?
Yeah.
What about football?
We don't have a football team.
Nice try.
I guess, I guess, I guess that --
We've had no requests. Are you, are you starting a league?
Do you want one?
I mean, I, you know?
Yeah, I mean, the reason I ask is because the striping for football is quite different from fire.
Right. I don't think we've ever discussed having football on the artificial turf playing field, but we could.
Okay. How long, how long does this stuff last, you know?
The life of the field.
It's permanent.
Yeah. Permanent. So I guess we'll have to build another field for football. Alan?
No.
Just kidding, everyone.
I just, you know.
There's been no request. We don't have a high school football team. We don't have football in Reinbeck. Football causes, I don't, just leave that there. All in favor of approving the soccer small-field line painting? Any questions or other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Aye, yeah. Surrendered.
That was easy. I need a motion for Resolution 2023-106 awarding the cemetery stone wall repair bid. Yay!
I'll make it.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. First of all, Suzanne, thank you. We have all the money together, and we're gonna --
Fill the wall.
Well, we're gonna fix the wall, actually. We're gonna restore a historic wall. We've gotten grants from the Frost Foundation, and the Town has put away some money, and really thrilled that we'll have this all taken care of, and the cemetery continues to look wonderful, so thank you. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2023-107 to hire cemetery part-time labor. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I need a motion for Resolution 2023-108 for e-waste collection at the transfer station.
Make a motion.
I knew it, Ed. Thanks. Second?
Second.
I'll take Chans. Thanks, guys. Are there any questions or comments? Ed, you want to explain how this works?
Yeah. A lot is going to avail themselves every Saturday from 8:00 to 1:00 at the transfer station to take any electronics that people want to get rid of, which is no place right now disposable, so they're making this convenient. Every Saturday, they can be there with their truck and have a man to take everything, 8:00 to 1:00. So if you have anything you want to get rid of, just bring it up there.
And it's free, Ed.
Free.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for Mike Dresch, our transfer station manager, for putting it together. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I need a resolution for 2023-109 for a pay grade increase for our cemetery ground scheme.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2023-110 for preliminary accounts payable abstract. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chans. Any questions or comments? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I will make a motion for Resolution 2023-111 for our capital projects abstracts. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Are there any questions, comments, concerns? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I'll make the motion for the 2023-112 Agenda... What is this called? Resolution for Budget Transfers and Amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chans. Any questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Any new business before the board? I think we do. Thanks, Joan.
Welcome.
Resolution 2023-113, I will motion it. May I have a second?
Second.
This is to request a 30-day extension for the filing of our 2021, or is it 2022, Joanie?
22.
Okay, let's amend this to 30-day extension for the filing of our 2022 AUD, Annual Update Document, with the Office of the State Controller.
The last line, yes, 2022.
The title didn't.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Our AUD is due on 31st of March. Ray DeChili does this in conjunction with our bookkeeper, and this is a just-in-case. We don't get it filed. We have the 30-day extension. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Okey-dokey. Right on time. New field use and rental for the soccer team. Again, Carrie and Michael and I, Decola, met briefly. Just right on time, I remember.
I just came off the field.
How was the field doing?
I've never gotten to it, and there's not kids playing, so.
Everybody's happy.
Everybody out there is.
It's all that counts. And what we sort of talked about was how we were going to handle the rental of the field. And I think that what was recommended by the REC Committee and our REC Director is that we want a lot of time that's not scheduled, so that kids and, and people can go out there and play on it. We're recommending that it not be open to non-Reinbeck leagues for the town, for the time being, that we allow the Dutch Elite, Reinbeck Soccer, and whatever games or practice they're doing, and a couple of local adult, Reinbeck teams. And not rent it out to Poughkeepsie, Kingston, other towns. We'll, we'll mandate that everything has to be scheduled for the REC Director, and the times that it's not scheduled, it will be open for unstructured play.
That's in the school.
School doesn't want to use it. They have their own field. I mean, we, that, we talked with Albert about this late last year, so they have their own field. And that's the recommendation. Was that an accurate portrayal? Michael, you want to stand up?
I'm so what?
Fresh off the field, our REC Committee Chair, Michael Decola.
I'm the park committee chair. Sorry. So I, I think that's a great way to start. I think eventually, we're gonna need to do some rentals in the future. It would be good if the field can generate some income and still manage to support all the uses that you're talking about. I think we're looking at a 10-year timeframe of, of needing to put together the funds to replace the carpet.
Turned into a wall, yeah.
It'll probably last a good five to 10 years longer than that, but we need to be responsibly thinking about raising the money from the field's use to, to refurbish it and keep it very playable and in good shape. The, the other thing I wanted to talk about along those same lines is to do a town-sponsored, organized pickup program through the REC program, so that we would designate field times that pickup games could take place that would be, people would register through the MyREC program. There would be people who opened and closed the games. So it would be like other town athletic programs, and it would give people the opportunity to come, join.
These are for adults or?
Well, we'll start with adults, but I'd, I'd like to do, I'd like to do kids' organized pickup, too. I think that that's the next step. I know there's demand for adults, and it's a way that we can get other groups of people doing organized play on the field in a way that doesn't compete with the uses that you're talking about. Almost every time I've had a practice on the field, we're using one half, because, and there's, there's free play going on on the other half. And we were just out on the field with two teams practicing and kids playing on goals in the middle of the field. So there's plenty of room for all those activities to go on together. If there ends up being a pickup game that is not scheduled, that does need a larger area of the field going on at the same time as one of these scheduled events, that's when we're gonna run into the, somebody has to leave. You know, somebody has to be on space.
The person who isn't scheduled.
Right, the person who isn't scheduled. But it would be nice to offer, as a town program, a pickup soccer game that's happening.
Should we work on this with Carrie and bring it to us?
We've talked about it. I, I'd like for you guys to vote on it as soon as possible, because we have 80 people who are in a mailing list.
I'd like something in front of us, so at our next meeting.
Okay.
I mean, right?
I, I don't know what you need in front of you, so just tell me.
I do. Carrie knows. We'll, we'll work on it.
Okay.
You'll allow pickup lacrosse, pickup football.
If those, if, if there's a group of people that want to do that, they should absolutely come and talk to Carrie, and we can organize.
Talk to Michael, talk to Carrie. It's open for everyone.
Yeah.
Football team.
Well, we don't have football goals and, and, but yes, any kind of, a flag football need.
I used to play football on the street, so.
Yeah, we.
So we'll put something, we'll give you something.
Yeah, we want, we want to notice the public. We want a proposal. It'd be nice to have an agenda item.
Okay.
But great. I mean, it's a big success.
Yes.
We have, I, I'll just reiterate. We have the boulders coming in the next week. The fence is going in on Thursday.
Oh, perfect.
Bob and Matthews are going to place the boulders about six and a half feet apart, so that cars can't drive on the field.
Right.
We'll top up the Item 4. It'll remain a natural unpaid ground parking lot. Bob is going to widen the drive for us.
Perfect.
We might have to line that with boulders, too. And we're gonna take out the gate once that happens, so that it's open, you know? Open to the public. People can drive back there. They can park. They can walk. They can go to the field. They could go to the pickleball courts. They could go to the baseball. They could go to the skate park.
I think with the, with a two-way, you know, enough room for two cars to go in and out, there's no reason to have a gate. It's, it'll be safe for people coming and out, and why, why restrict access?
Yes, indeed. All right, so thanks for everything. I mean, we're getting there.
It's great. Thank you, guys, for all the support that you've shown toward this. People are so happy to be at the.
Well, it's great to hear. This has been on the books for, what? 13, 14 years, and it's great that we finally got it done. And you've really pushed it along, so thank you.
It's so nice for me to go out and see. I mean, I went out, went out today. There was two different families playing together. You know, parents playing with their kids. There was a group of six girls that had come down from after school to play soccer together, and they were on a goal. And then there was our team setting up, so it's, it's a real big success.
Thank you. Thanks for your work.
Sorry, Michael. Can you just mention that we had talked about having some sort of signage at the field?
Yeah.
Because what we'd like is for the public to easily access the schedule, so they can see when there's open time.
Okay, put that on. You know, just give us a resolution for that. And.
We can include it in the pickup one. I think we need someplace where people can, you know, with the, the code, where you go with your phone, and you can look at the schedule.
Do we need a kiosk or something?
I think they just need a, a laminated sign that, that's weatherproof and that people can go and look at. And it might mention keeping dogs off the field, which hasn't been a problem as much lately.
With the snow, with the snow fence up.
It, it helps. I mean, and then when we have the other fence up. People, people, the word won't.
Yeah, I think we have to say it again. Dogs are not allowed in the park off-leash. And if people let their dogs run and defecate on the field, we'll have to rethink allowing dogs in the park.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. We had a discussion here about compost. And I sort of put it on as an agenda item, because really, the phone's ringing off the hook with compost. With people saying, why aren't you supporting the village? Which we are supporting the village. And why are we paying all this money? What are we getting? So, you know, we, we put together a list of questions, and I'll just go through them.
By the way, I met with Vanessa to go through them.
Great.
So I'll ask the question, and I'll tell you the answer, if I know it.
Well, the village submitted costs for their composting pilot, total at $12,000. I'd like to see the backup. We don't have any overview of their pilot project. How many folks participated?
Hundred households.
Hundred households.
Ten, sixteen.
How many were in the town? Zero in the town.
Right, the town, only village residents were in the pilot.
And what was the timeframe of the pilot? I mean, I'd like these questions answered from the village. You know, this is a serious, it's a $325,000 project for a town of 8,300 people. And we don't even know who's going to be using it, so.
Oh, some of that's grant money, isn't it?
It's all grant money, but it still, doesn't matter. It's still tax money, yeah. Philosophically and personally, I compost at my home. I'm all for this. We're the stewards of the town's money. I'm the chief financial officer. You know, what are, what are we going to be paying $25,000 for? And 12,500 a week, a year? Who's going to use it? I mean, the village has not committed to collecting data, you know, data, usage data.
Yeah, we, we have, we came up with a way to do that, but it's, you can't do it until you start doing it.
How, how, how would you do it?
We'd basically give people, have a coupon system where they can get credits for depositing compost. And you, you can count the tickets. But that's, that's practically the only way to do it.
How do you get tickets? Who?
Even when you come and drop something off, you get a ticket.
Who?
You just take it out of the, out of the dispenser.
So how do you know if it's a town resident or a village resident?
Because when they come back with the, with, to cash them in, then you know, then, well, where do you live?
Well, who comes back? Where do they cash them in?
The person.
Took the ticket.
The person that takes the ticket will.
But what if they don't cash them in?
Oh, then you don't know.
And are restaurants and hospital and the schools going to?
The restaurants all use ozone to pick up. They do curbside. They wouldn't, they wouldn't participate in this.
Okay. Is there another way, you know, to think about offering this for our town residents? Red Hook has the ozone pickup at their transfer station for like $200 a month.
We're, yeah, it's possible. What they're proposing is a, a drop-off station at the library, at the, at the municipal lot, at the tran, at the transfer station, our transfer station, and at the Village Highway Department. The main one would be at the Village Highway.
Well, that's where the composting is going to be done.
That's right. What they would pick up at those other three locations as well.
So, the library, the municipal lot, and so three village things and one in the town.
Yeah, transfer station. Well, the highway department's in the town.
Yeah, it is.
So it's two in the town and two in the village.
All right. And I guess what's the, what's the budget for the yearly operation on this? Where's the backup?
I didn't see it. I mean, it was basically salary for one, for, for one highway department individual.
For how many hours and when, what days?
She showed me what it was, but it was all guesses.
How do you guys, I mean, I'm just asking the financial questions.
I think they should be answered, yeah. Absolutely.
I, what I suggest is, why don't we get Vanessa to come in and talk to us and get answers to the questions? The other thing is, they're, what they're asking for is not necessarily what we have to provide. So there's some negotiating room, I think.
Yeah, okay. I mean, of course, I'd like to support it. We don't have $25,000 budget in for this year. And it's capital, you know, it's a, it's a general.